Comments? Does anyone have any comments on the July 6th meeting minutes? Does everybody have a chance to read them?
Yes.
In that case, I would entertain a motion regarding the July 6th meeting minutes.
I'm moved.
I've got a motion to approve the July 6th meeting minutes any second.
Second.
Yeah, I've got two seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you all very much. I noticed we did not have the July 12th and July 19th joint meeting minutes. Could you have those for us for the next month's meeting? And whatever they did for supervisors should be fine for us as well, but I think we should have an official record of those meetings. Okay. At this time, I'll open up the public comment period. Speakers have an opportunity to speak for three minutes for an individual or five minutes for a group on any planning matter, since we don't have any public hearings tonight. So at this time, I'll open up the public comment period. We even have anybody online other than Mr. Greenwood? Okay. Anyone want to speak in the public comment period? Well, I think tonight will be a short meeting. At this time, I will close the public comment period. And the next item up is unfinished business review of the draft ordinance. Ms. Grammy passed something out. Would you like to speak with us and then commissioners can opine?
This had actually been previously sent to you. I just printed it out. It's an outline of Berkeley of the changes, what changes have been made. And then the only other thing to mention is we are scheduled for a public hearing at our September meeting on the 5th and then to the Board of Supervisors on September 25th.
Anything else? Commissioners? Anybody? Mr. Greenwood? Any questions, comments?
No, everything goes good, thanks.
Anyone else?
I would just like to ask, how soon would Berkeley be able to get us the final drafted copy with everything?
I want that as soon as possible. I did ask Rebecca last week if she had anything for us. She'd been on vacation, so she knows I need it as soon as possible.
So once we get that, I would suggest we have a work session to review that together. We can all review it separately and be ready, but I think we need to review it together to make sure we're all in concert with their final version.
As soon as I get it, I will send it out for everybody.
Does that sound great to everybody?
Yes.
I'd like to go and schedule it out if we can then. A week before the public hearing or two weeks? I think two weeks would not give us the time.
Two weeks if it's available. Two weeks if it's available. Because if we have any comments or changes, we would need to get those back to Berkeley.
That's true.
How soon do you think we can get a copy of that?
I'm hoping by the end of the week or first of next week. Do you have some dates in mind for the work session?
I don't. I'm pretty much available most any day, so it's really more of the other commissioners, their availability and yours as well.
So two weeks prior to that is what they...
What's everyone's availability that week? Are there any days that folks can't make it between the 23rd and the 27th?
We would have to say about availability of this room as well.
Well, let me mention that the 23rd is the board supervisors meeting.
Okay, right.
So let's go ahead and shoot for the 24th.
Okay.
I will check tomorrow, make sure that it's available. If it's not, then we'll maybe try to go for the 25th.
Or we could meet back in the chambers and anyone who came is welcome to sit in as well. So we will adjourn to whatever date we decide on and anyone who comes could go there if this room is not available.
Well, we also, I can probably get the historical boardroom and we can hook up to zoom there.
Even better. Okay. So does the 24th work for everybody? Okay, great. Okay, then so Ms. Graham, if you would get the final PDF to everybody as soon as you get it from the Berkeley group. And when we adjourn tonight, remind me that I'm old and senile, remind me that we're adjourning to the work session on the 24th. So anything else, anyone wants to cover on the ordinance tonight?
I have a couple more questions for Mrs. Graham. I just wanted to ask how you're feeling about the draft. Is there anything that you have any concerns or anything that you might have missed? And I'd also like to see, like, I know it's hard to put a percentage on, but do you feel 95% confident that Berkeley has captured, you know, all the changes that we've gone over since this last?
I think most of them are in there. We still really need to get Mr. McRoberts on board to review it.
That was going to be one of my questions.
There are some possible legal little stuff that I want Mr. McRoberts to check on before we take it to public hearing.
But he needs the final, final draft before he can do that. So will he, I mean, if we go, if we meet on the 24th, and hopefully, you know, whether we do or we don't, will he have enough time to review it in front of them?
He's probably going to need a week or two.
If I may, I would get it to him at whatever time you think is appropriate. I'd rather suspect that any changes we might have, if any, would be so minimal that he would be able to review those. And I don't think there's going to be anything that we would have that would have to lead ramifications. So again, I would schedule it around whatever works for the ordinance as a whole, recognizing that if you do add something in, he might have to take a quick look at that as well. So. Anything else besides?
I was all, thank you.
Anything for you.
Will the final draft be available on the website or is it already available as it currently stands with existing changes?
As soon as we get the most recent draft, final draft, Krista will get that on our webpage.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to get, that way it can be available to the community.
We try to update it for the information as we get it there.
One more thing. I tried to go out on the county website to where the draft ordinance is. I didn't see just a quick place to know what the public hearing schedule is. So can we make that, make sure that that's somewhere prominent, that people know that that's coming if they click on it? Thank you.
We have pretty much like the public hearing advertisement that I showed to you that kind of outlines pretty much everything on this that we were going to put out there as well. But, you know, we need to get those on there so they know what the dates are.
I mean, that will be on the calendar, but just in case they click on that.
On the side, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have a couple of questions and comments on some ongoing work in the county. First of all, the road coming out on 360 next to the car wash.
Oh, Mr. Wagner. If it's not related to the ordinance, we can save that for just a moment. I did have one thing on the ordinance. So we had quite a bit of discussion on the lot size, and I think we've come up with the solution that most citizens are happy with. I'm not sure I am, but what matters more is the citizens as a whole and supervisors. We also had a fair amount of concern about family subduations. Again, I think that's been resolved as well. One area though, that I don't think has been resolved is on tent camping. We currently have three definitions and we have three uses, only conditional use. One is for a campground related to solely to RVs, to camping trailers and other recreational vehicles. A second one is day or youth camps. And a third one is association camps. And so we don't have anything for commercial tent camping, and yet we have at least one conditional use permit for commercial tent camping. So I'd like to see us add a definition for that and then add something to the ordinance as well, preferably by the time we have a work session. Is that something you'd like to tackle or would you like us to tackle that?
We can tackle it together if you like.
Okay.
I can send you, I can grab something up and send it to you all.
Oh, that would be grand.
And then we can discuss it at the work session.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. All right, and that's all I had on the ordinance. And so now at this point, let's see what else. So the next item up is new business, and I believe that's you, Mr. Wagner.
All right. Some questions I had, Sheri, that entrance coming out next to the car wash on 360, is that part of the approved plans for the central crossing?
That's going into that development.
Yeah, in the central crossing development. But my question is, is that a part of the approved site plan for central crossing?
I think originally it was. They're wanting to move things over. That hasn't been signed off on yet. We have to get VDOT involved with that because they want to line up the turn lanes going in there, and that's going to be VDOT.
There are several issues there, but one of the main issues is if we haven't approved that the changes they're talking about making, I believe, that should come before, the site plan addition should come before the planning commission.
Right now, the entrance, we need to get VDOT comments back.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I know originally it was approved for turn lane.
In front of the car wash?
For the car wash and a turn lane on the island.
On the median? Yes, yes. And you're right, they have to align that with the crossover or they will probably have to adjust the crossover.
I saw yesterday, it looked like it was a mess.
I don't know what's happening with that entrance next door, next to it, to the little brick house, but it looks like it's going to be encroaching on that.
Yeah, I was going to send our inspector out there to take a look at it. We had a class today, but I will send it out tomorrow.
And I rode back last week into McCully Park, into the new section back there. Looks like a lot of houses going in back there. And I guess we, I was just looking at what Christina gave us. It looks like those houses that are being developed are all in that July report, it appears to be.
There's a few of them, there will be more.
Yeah, there will. There are a lot of houses back there. Those, the inspection of those roads, they're going into the state system?
Eventually.
Okay, who inspects those? Do we or does VDOT?
We haven't seen. I'd have to check with Josh. I know he's looking at them as far as like utilities and so forth. We have HRC going in there, but I'm not sure. I'm sure VDOT is looking at them as well, since they're wanting VDOT to take them over once they're complete.
Yeah, I think that needs to be coordinated with VDOT. If they're not doing the inspection, then we're going to have to certify.
And I'm not positive how they're doing it, but I can find out.
And that's all I have right now.
Mr. Sluter, any new business? Mr. Greenwood, any new business?
No new business. I'm just, I agree with Ms. Height about the former comment she made about the website. Now I'm finding out how hard it is for people to get in because I almost didn't get in myself, but like she said, it's hard to get to the ordinances, you can't find anything. And it was even hard to get to the meeting. So now I see what the residents are telling me about, they're complaining about, but that's not our issues, but maybe we should mention it to someone who is doing the web support.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Greenwood?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Sluter?
One thing just occurred to me. Do we have it outlined explicitly for the public on the website or anywhere? Can we make it available on all the changes that had been made to the ordinance plan?
It is on there, but we are going to do an update. It'll pretty much be this year that was passed down with the hearing dates that are coming up.
And if I could, both for your benefit and for anyone else, originally, we were hoping to have the crosswalk from the old ordinance to the new. And while the text itself did not change that much, the organization changed so much that it was next to impossible to have a crosswalk, which broke my heart, but you live with what you have to live with. So again, we've been keeping track of the changes generally speaking, but the crosswalk was next to impossible to put together. It would have been cause prohibited as well, so. Anybody else? If not, we'll go to special reports and updates from staff.
Okay, and I'm going to turn this over to Christina. This has come off of our new system, Edmund, so it's a little larger, a little easier to read. There's still a few hiccups with it. She did work to try to get it all onto one sheet, but...
So I have been working directly with Edmunds for quite some time throughout the process since we started the implementation. And their system's a little bit different where they have what's called canned reports that you cannot modify, so we have to work within the parameters of the system. And so what you're seeing with the three reports are the canned reports that I'm not able to modify. So there's three different reports you're looking at. One are all of the zoning permits that have been issued for the month of July. And it does not include the land disturbance. It's just the zoning permits that were issued during July. So you'll see the permit issued, the permit number, when it was issued, the property location, what might be a little bit confusing to you underneath the type. It says zoning and building. It's just because all of the permits, they have the same permit number. So it's to the benefit of the citizens where they have the exact same permit number throughout the process instead of different permit numbers. So they are indeed zoning permits. And then it has the actual customer's name. So it's a little bit easier to read, but again, I'm not able to modify from what you're looking at. So going forward, this is what you'd be seeing. We tried to customize it, and I worked with them quite a bit to try to do that, but their customization is not friendly. So you're not able to customize it in the manner that we would like to. So right now, this is what we're looking at unless they're able to figure out something otherwise. So that is the, the first one is the permits that have been issued on the zoning side. The second one, when Sheri and I went, first started through the process, we wanted to be able to tell the types of zoning permits that were issued, and I think you all had mentioned that as well. So the only way they're able to break that out is by actually looking at the fees. So we originally went in the system and we broke it out by the types of zoning permits. So there's not a lot of information other than the building permit number and the type of zoning permit, like the zoning change in use, if it's a new construction on the commercial side, if it's residential zoning permit, a home occupation permit, if it's a tenant permit. So you can see what's actually been issued for the different types. You just aren't able to see the property location. We're going to try to work a little bit more on that, but just the way that our system is set up, we're not able to modify it at this time, but at least you get an idea of the different types and how many. So that's the second report that you're looking at for the month of July. And then the third one is actually the violations piece. And we just started entering those for July. And this is on the zoning side. So you'll see, there's really only three in there for the month of July. And the first one is actually one that you'll see initially was opened, and then the second one is passed. And that's because the violation was actually corrected. So went out there, took a look at it, sent a courtesy notice. They removed the camper that passed. And then the second and third one, I'll probably be going out there tomorrow to take a look at those. So that's the third one that you'll be looking at. So I didn't go back and re-enter the ones for June, just kind of started in July, since that's really when I started doing the permitting piece.
Very good, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Greenwood? Oh, yes, Mr. Wagner, go ahead.
Just a comment, if you will. From what I see, to this point, this is much but what we've been trying to decipher.
Anyone else? A quick question for you. There was some software out at the meeting, and there was some talk about a user group. Was that the Edmonds or was it something else? And if there isn't a user group, or even if there isn't, I guess there are other localities using Edmonds. Have you talked to any other planning offices to see what they're doing, what they're finding, what's working for them? And along the line of these reports, is there something that you all as a group would say, hey, we'd really like to see a report that does this or that, that Edmonds might see benefit in adding that to their camp reports?
The only one we know of locally that uses it is Essex. And I know Anthony, the building official, has worked with them on the building side. So we'll be getting in touch with them for the planning and zoning. And they, there is a different module for the planning and zoning piece that we do not have, so that may be part of the hindrance of some of these reports, but certainly we'll be reaching out to them to see if there are other reports that they've customized that Edmonds is not able to give us that tool, but we'll be reaching out to them as well.
Is Essex using the planning, its own module?
That I don't know.
Okay.
So we have their contact information.
Yeah, I've found with software, sometimes those modules can take something from being somewhat useful to being very useful in other instances of no value whatsoever. So I look forward to you learning more and seeing what you can do to make the system work for you better, so.
We learned quite a bit from the beginning. Spent a great deal of time.
I'm sure you have. All righty. So we've covered the reports, so I guess it's time for commissioner comments. I'll start with you, Mr. Greenwood, since you're remote, and I have a tendency to forget people if I'm not looking at them, so.
Okay. All right, thanks. Yeah, sorry, everybody, I was planning this vacation. This is our next vacation that we do every year for the past 27 years. So we were able to come, they got everything fixed back up for us through COVID, and we were able to come. So just sorry for not being there. Wish I was up there with y'all. Of course, y'all sound like you're having better weather than we are. We're having big storms here and it's supposed to be flooding. But anyway, thanks for everything, and the reports look good. Like I said, and I know it's going to be a hassle and an issue with that new Edmonds, and we're still working with that Bright system too. So I know y'all are going through a lot, so thanks, thanks for doing everything that you do, and good seeing everybody.
Mr. Greenwood? Mr. Sluter, so I don't forget you again.
I'd like to just say that, you know, I like the effort the county's making on trying to improve the reports and the websites and everything. I think it's important that our community has access to these types of information. And the more user-friendly it is, the more important, yeah, the better it will be for everybody because we'll be able to solicit better feedback from the community, especially with the comprehensive plan and the upcoming commentary for public hearings. So certainly, I think that's really important. I understand that the comprehensive plan survey has increased to over 400, I think, survey responses, is what I, do you know offhand? I've heard that somewhere, I'm not sure. So that's really good to hear, certainly. If these things are being, if these things are difficult to find on the website, you know, that doesn't benefit any of us as far as getting feedback that we need.
Yeah, I think the comprehensive plan stuff is fairly available now, which it was not initially. So thank you for making that a little more prominent. And if there are any groups that any of y'all can speak to, to let them know about the comprehensive plan in particular and the survey as well, that would be very worthwhile. I think Mr. Moran spoken to the Rarotan, I've spoken to the, to the Social Society as well as to the Farm Bureau, but there are other groups that y'all are aware of that need to get the word out on the comprehensive plan and the survey. Please, if you move forward. Also, thank you, Ms. Walker, for what you've done on our behalf, on Facebook as well as to the Country Courier. I wish the tideboard review would do an article. Do they even have a reporter anymore that covers King William?
I don't think so.
All right, I apologize for going out of order. Ms. Height?
Just want to thank staff and everyone that's been putting all their efforts in on everything to get us to this point. I know it's not been easy, and we're getting closer to that, to that final stage. I know we don't have a lot of people in the audience tonight or online, but I just wanted to put it out there for anybody that might review this, that, you know, even though we have one more work session that we're planning as far as the draft ordinance is concerned, that even when this goes to public hearing, that this is a living document. There are going to need to be changes. Hopefully that, as Mr. Breeden said to me last month, hopefully that there won't be whole-scale starting from scratch the way we've had to do this time, but it is a living document. There will need to be changes made. We will find things that we need to go back and revisit. So I just hope everybody can, you know, get their arms around that this is not just, you know, set in stone once we get to that point of the public hearing. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I want to go back to new business. I have one question for Sheri and for y'all's information as well. Last Friday, I believe you all had heard a report from Mr. Hubbard and Chris Couch. Is that correct? I've gotten some information talking to Mr. Moran and Bob Hubbard both about that report. Seems like there's a lot of information in there that would be very useful to the planning commission in moving forward with the comprehensive plan. I would like to see that presented to the planning commission, depending on timing or whatever possibly at our work session, but sometime in the near future because we are in the middle of the comp plan right now, and we do need, I think that information would be invaluable to all of us. I understand that Mr. Couch wanted to do that in person, so, you know, if we could make those arrangements, it would appreciate it. And my wife's holding up something back there. I did hand this out to you all. This is an article about Hannover County's comprehensive plan. They're just getting ready to start that. David Maloney, who is the planning director in Hannover County, very well-respected individual, has a lot of really good comments in there about the process and about how things should be done. Jeanette sent a copy of that to Eby Sloan, and she appreciated getting that. So this is for y'all's information. I hope you get a chance to read it over and look at it. And I am not trying to sell us looking like Hannover County, not at all. I lived in Hannover County when Hannover County was about where King William County is now, but King William County will never get to the place Hannover County is. And so I'm not looking at that, but there is a lot of good information in that that would be good for us to review and look at.
I saw an early version of the spreadsheet that Mr. Couch had put together. I prefer not to do it at our work session and definitely not at a public hearing.
Sometime in the...
But how about the October meeting? Would that work for everybody?
Yeah.
We would have the draft ordinance out of the way, that would probably be in on your time.
Yeah, that would be good to have that out of the way.
If you would, and see if they're available for our October regular meeting.
And other than that, I'd just like to thank staff, and I would like to thank the usual crowd for showing up tonight.
All right, I'd like to thank staff as well. We're going to wrap up very early tonight, but that's a good thing because next month we won't be wrapping up early. We'll be adjourning to our work session in just a moment as soon as we get the final, final, final... As soon as we get the final, final, final draft ordinance, please, all planning commissioners, review it one last time. Be ready to discuss any concerns you have at the work session. I don't think there will be many changes at all. I think it will be relatively minor. The things that come up with a word here, a comma there, very little, if anything, to be added to the ordinance. I think we do need something for commercial campgrounds, but beyond that, if you see something that jumps at you, we may also hear comments at the public hearing that we want to take into account, and then whether we recommend approval at the September meeting or defer it. I'm hoping we'll be recommending approval, but we may hear something that we haven't heard up until now through the process we've been through. We shouldn't have come up with anything else. We should have already identified everything. But be ready, that may happen. And hopefully, we'll recommend approval at the September meeting. The board supervisors will approve it at their regular scheduled meeting. And that major project we've put to bed, we can focus on the comprehensive plan that's so important as well. So, with that, I will adjourn the meeting to the same location, same time on August 24th. Is that what we agreed to, correct?
Mr. Breeden?
Yes.
Not adjourning, you're postponing, or we shouldn't adjourn, you should just postpone it till the next meeting, because if we adjourn it, it's closed.
Well, adjourning to the next meeting, but it's clearly postponing. What is the correct terminology? Is it postpone? Because postpone implies we are not meeting now.
Right, yeah. Yeah, postpone's not right either, but there is a word, but it's not adjourned, because if we adjourn, that means we're closing. It's a different term. I can't remember off the top of my head what it is. It's a...
I left the Robert's rules at home.
Yeah. But we understand what you meant.
Yeah, so the meeting will be continued. Thank you, Mr. Moran. So, the meeting is continued until...
Right.
August 24th at 7:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. Moran.
Thank you.
We're now continuing.